Next week, do we need to have Zoom available for that? And do you want to record it?
Well, I think we're going to try and do it down here.
Yep.
And not stream it, but put it on Zoom.
I just need to know what we're going to do so I can set it up.
Yeah. So I think, yeah, we can just use a, you know, a little portable cam on the table or something. Try and just have it at the end.
You do that.
Yep.
Are you expecting everybody tonight?
Except for Daryl.
No, Daryl.
Daryl's out of town.
Okay.
It's probably just going to be for power to go down there. Because I know somebody who works in a home. So I really would get right through to the site better then. And they would go put the stuff down there for free. They will put a new meter in for free once he's great. And now it's about ten minutes to five hours. I don't know how long he always paid. Right? He's like, well, I'm intrigued and fascinated by this, so we might as well. I go, thank you. Because I didn't know this to get some good access.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
For free.
I always thought they...
Just letting you know we're going to make that announcement.
I mean, I think it's because if you already have them, they're just anyways. They tend to think they are okay when you show them.
Franklin is Earl without his cannon sometimes.
Oh, yeah.
You too. Question, I have to tell you something I have to do with this. Oh.
When's it going to start, Snow Earl? Six o'clock? Yeah?
Yes.
Have to be able to push off to useful facilities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was told today this morning.
Okay. What do you think, three passes?
Yeah, it's benched. That's going to go to Miss.
Well, there is, certainly.
Oh, how's this weather, sorry?
I don't know why I'm cold.
Huh?
I'm cold, are you cold?
That's why I got this on, I didn't want to be cold. I'm thinking of the snow coming in on Thursday day. Well, I do remember having our kids hunt for eggs with snow on the ground. Third week of April.
Remember doing a snowman in April?
Yeah.
And this would have been nice if you had it in the winter.
Oh, yep, I think that's exactly right.
Yeah. I wanted it in January. Not anymore. Yeah.
Well, we don't know what this is going to be. It's going to be slushy, it's going to be...
Yeah, we'll lose power.
Maybe we'll lose power.
The tree in my backyard will go down because I'm tired of looking at it two months ago.
So, when I grew up, I was living on a river.
Yeah.
It was more of an estuary. And the river, it was a mile across and five miles long, and there was a bridge. My grandf- my grandfather lived on the top of the bank, and, you know, the bank was like fifteen feet tall. And it's a stormy day, and he's watching this boat float down. There wasn't anybody in it. And then it was, I think it was a dinghy or something, and it gets behind this tree that has been there forever. And he goes, "God damn tree." And the thing fell over. It was like, freaked him out.
Reporting in progress.
Freaked him out.
Never have to worry about that tree anymore.
No.
Everybody ready? Looks like we're good. All right. Welcome to Freeport Council Chambers. We will call a meeting to order. It is meeting number zero seven dash two four. Today is April 2nd, 2024. And we're starting just a minute or two after six o'clock. Please join me as we start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, yeah, we've got to do that. So we will find out who's here. Welcome all to Council Chambers. Great to have a crowd residents participating in our meeting. Let's do roll call first. Counselor Pillsbury?
Present.
Counselor Benoit?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Present.
Counselor Pilch?
Here.
And Counselor Chip Lawrence? And the Chair, John Egan, is here. Great. Counselor Fornier is traveling in excuse this evening. So our first action item is to waive the reading of the minutes and accept a motion to adopt the meeting minutes of meeting number zero six dash two four, held on March 19th, 2024, and to accept them as printed. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other comments or questions about the minutes? Thank you, Chris Wolf, for a presentation of accurate minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero. Great, adopted the minutes. Our next order is announcements, and I have one, and others can chime in. We'd like to acknowledge the passing of Linda Bean last week as the granddaughter of L.L. Bean's founder, Leon Leon Woodbean. Linda served for five decades on the board of the family business and built her own business, the Maine Kitchen and Topside Tavern here in Freeport also. We'd like to note that Linda Bean's philanthropy, her contributions to the arts, land conservation, and lifelight of Maine, the efforts to restore Port Clyde after the tragic fire, and her successful ventures and investments in Maine's lobster, real estate, and hospitality industries. On behalf of the people of Freeport, we extend our deep condolences to Linda's family and loved ones. Other announcements from counselors. All right. I know we've had some correspondence with some folks on a couple of different things. So our next item is information exchange. This is a chance for counselors to share feedback and information from committees and also constituent communications. Anyone have something to share? I have an item, but I'll wait to see if anybody else. Counselor Smith?
Just to let everyone know, you've seen some of this correspondence, but the manager and I have been taking a number of items that will eventually go to the Complete Streets Committee, particularly around concerns with MDOT work due to be completed this summer on 125, particularly the Griffin Road portion of 125. And also on 125, we've had some concerns related to speed and traffic calming measures. So I just wanted to share that those will be going to Complete Streets. And Earl and Sophie and I will be continuing to have conversation to make sure that we're on the same page with MDOT and in full discussion about what, how we can, we can continue to improve traffic flow and safety on Route 125.
Great. Other announcements? Counselor Benoit?
The Fit Up Grant Program awarded $2,750, which is the remainder of the allocated amount, to Freeport Mine Body and Fitness, which will be a new business in downtown. So that's, that's all of it.
Wow.
Yeah.
Very successful. Thanks to Brett Richardson and the committee responsible for that. Saw a need, created a program, got it done, made an impact. Fabulous. I just want to add that although there was a great gap of time in between my initial idea and some follow-up, that we're finally going to be collecting historic photographs of the recreational development at Florida Lake, which is a treasured town-owned asset out on Route 125 that is now a pristine wetland and birding area. But 50 years ago, it was a recreation site, and you might not even recognize the photographs from, from back then. So we have a local resident who has agreed to share her collection of those photographs, and we'll be putting up a signboard at Florida Lake in addition to maybe some other improvements out there to improve accessibility. So happy to hear that we're finally going to get moving on that. And the delay is mostly my fault for not following up on that. But so, finally got that going. So hopefully we'll see some improvements there later this summer. Other announcements? Okay. Next up is the Town Manager's Report. Sophie?
Yes. So a few items to report. First, Cumberland County Emergency Management is working throughout the region to make sure that folks know that there is assistance available for individuals that were impacted by the January 10th and 13th weather events, wind, primarily wind, rain events. The, if you look on the town Freeport website, there is a link that will take you to Cumberland County EMA. You have until May 20th to request assistance. It's not as easy as I had to spend money, and so I get reimbursed. There is a process to go through, but there are folks there to help you, both at Cumberland County and Senator King's office is also staffing outreach for folks who need assistance with that. We received news late this afternoon from the Maine Department of Transportation that our request to place the parklet on the north end of Route 1 has been denied. So Earl pushed back. And what we have been told is that this is not a state decision. This is actually coming from the federal government. And it's not just us. But that when we said we've been doing it for years, what we heard is we allowed this to happen because of COVID, and COVID is not here anymore. We will not allow this. You are welcome to put the parklet on a town street if you so choose. So I think we're going to kind of go back to the drawing board with that for right now. The other thing that will happen is, just for good measure, and because I like sometimes to push a little bit, my intention is to call the head office at MDOT tomorrow and see if there was by any chance a misunderstanding in the, in the guidance that we have been given. My hunch is probably not, but it's worth the try. Also want to let you know, at the last meeting, we heard from a community member who was really concerned, frustrated about gunfire in his neighborhood and felt like we should be doing more to help him feel safe in his home. I met, actually earlier today, with Counselor Benoit and Chief Goodman to understand what the concern is, to review ordinances, state law, previous interactions that we've had with the District Attorney's Office that tell us that the DA's office is not going to follow up on that kind of charge. And we have a plan to reach out to the property owner, Counselor Benoit, and to be a little bit, to encourage that person to actually call the police and not wait. And also reach out to the police, which is what Chief Goodman's going to do, to make it clear that when we are dealing with individuals with the, with the noise complaint, one of the issues we have is that they, the PD can't necessarily figure out where the gunfire is coming from. Unless they have, somebody can zero it in, the noise is still happening. And so to make it a little bit more clear that what the constraints on the PD are and what the PD would, will be doing next, so it doesn't feel like they just came and went and gunfire continues later. And I am reaching out. I have a meeting tomorrow with the town attorney. Since I'm paying for her time anyway, I will ask her for some clarification around discharge of firearms and how that fits into the noise ordinance. So we should be able to come back with some more information for council. Also, would welcome our deputy code officer who started today. I'm sorry, yesterday. He came back today. I was really excited he came back. His name is Alex Seroyce. I think I've got that. And he actually is coming to us. He was the code officer in Raymond. He was the lead of planning and code. And he's really excited to be the deputy here. I was really taken during his interview. He really focused on resolution and good customer service and working to get people to a good solution at the end of the day. So I was really pleased with that. I think that it's with, I think he and Nick are going to pair well in that department. The best news, though, is that I have been assured with Alex here, we're going to start being able to address some of the longer standing complaints. So we're going to kind of watch that as we move through. Also want to let folks know, I had a conversation with Chip, Counselor Lawrence, who is the Chair of the Ordnance Committee, which is slated to meet on Thursday for a variety of reasons, including the weather forecast. We are going to reach out to the Ordnance Committee folks to see if we can reschedule that meeting to next week. Chris has been doing a lot of work on a couple of suggestions for you to look at. So we're going to do that. And tomorrow night's Planning Board meeting, we're hoping that we'll be able to get that under the radar before the weather gets really bad. And I'm hoping if I talk about it and plan now, it means it won't come. But the, if we can get the Planning Board done, the whole thing, that's great. If it, the weather's starting to get bad, the plan is to hold the public hearing and likely table the Comprehensive Plan Workshop so that we can continue moving the regulatory pieces forward. I think I have spoken to everything I said. We have a new Public Works employee, Shane. Grow. Has, he actually worked for the town in a shared position with RSU 5. Oh, also, I put it in the, the Managers' Report for this week, but I think the community would be interested to know that there's a group of folks hard at work to bring fireworks to Freeport on the Fourth of July. It appears as though we have the approvals in place. I think the one that we're waiting for is the private property that we need to shoot the fireworks off from. So that is kind of where we are at this, at this juncture, I think.
Great. Any questions for the manager? Great, thank you, Sophie. The next item on our agenda is comment from the public. We do have three public hearings this evening. Some of you may have come for one or all of those. So this segment for public comment is for non-agenda items. It's a chance for members of the public to come forward and address a particular concern or provide some feedback. Occasionally, we hear what we're doing right. Just to put that out there. But it's actually mainly just to provide an avenue. We have this at every meeting for the public to comment back to the council on what's on your mind, for things that are not on our agenda. The way we have it structured is that this segment is for folks in the room. We'll have another item on the agenda later for anybody tuning in electronically or virtually to the meeting for public comment then. So if anyone would like to come up, please say who you are, where you live. And just in the spirit of other people's time, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. It's largely a presentation from you. It's not likely going to be a back and forth. And lastly, the microphone is exactly where it needs to be. So it looks like it's not, but it's exactly where it needs to be. So please, if anybody would like to come up, just make your way to the podium and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Chalmers Hardenberg, and I, excuse me, have a concern about the 22 Main Street Parcel Committee. I am aware that the council set this up in order to reach some kind of progress point at the end of May. I don't see anything on it, on our town calendar for April or May, so I'm a little concerned about whether this is being slow-walked in order to maybe never have this happen. Thank you.
Great, go ahead.
So I just want to speak to that. The delay at first was entirely my fault in that I did not realize it was my job to put the committee together. And so that's where the initial delay came from. Then we did a doodle to try to get the committee together, and we could not come up with a time when people could be there. So we tried to call Andy about 10 minutes ago, and he didn't answer his phone. So to find out...
He was on his way here, I think.
Yeah, yeah. So, but the plan at this point is to have a meeting the week of the 22nd of April and start clicking that away. The goal is still to meet the deadline that council has imposed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chalmers. Anyone else wish to make a comment during public comment, period? Okay. I don't see anybody else. We'll continue on. The next item is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is typically passed in one motion with routine and rather ordinary items. This evening's Consent Agenda, there's a copy on the table in the back, has a significant number of your friends and neighbors volunteering their precious time to serve on our committee. So that's not to be taken lightly. And so we really appreciate efforts to, to fill our committees. That's how we get things done in our, in our community is with a whole host of boards and commissions that provide resident input to the council and to the staff. I have one small addition to that Consent Agenda, but does anybody else have a reason why we would take an item off of the Consent Agenda for additional consideration?
Not necessarily to take it off, but just to add to the dog warrant, our most critical piece of business for the year. We usually see a list of all the dog names, which is kind of a highlight for me. That's missing from the warrant. So can we add that?
We can.
Okay. I think we could still pass it without it, but I'd love to see that.
And my only very minor addition is that the Appointments Committee actually just had an interview with another community resident who's interested in, in being on the Winslow Park Commission. So we'll add Anna Child to that list, along with the other names that are on the Consent Agenda. It was a unanimous vote by the Appointments Committee to appoint Anna to the Winslow Park Commission. So I'd like to get that underway. All right, all of that said, do we have a motion? I'm sorry, I'm supposed to read the motion. Consider action relative to adopting the April 2nd, 2024 Consent Agenda. Be it ordered that the April 2nd, 2024 Consent Agenda be adopted.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, six to zero. That was item number nine zero dash two four, if you're following along. The next item is our first public hearing, item number nine one dash two four. Counselor Pillsbury, could you please open the public hea- read the item and open the public hearing?
Item 91 dash 24, to consider action relative to proposed amendments to Section 501, temporary activity in Section 526A, food trucks of the Freeport zoning ordinance. To increase the number of food trucks allowed as an accessory use up to six. Food trucks for a maximum period of six months contingent on securing a temporary activity permit. Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I thought we were, you were opening. In the past, we've let the chair open the public hearing.
All right, I'll move that we open the public hearing.
That's what we've been doing all, all.
Yeah, right, so we don't have to vote. Right, to keep it moving along. Public hearing is now open. If you are here about the amendment to our ordinance allowing temporary use for food trucks, this is your time to speak and comment.
I can step down if there's any members of the public who would like to speak. But let me just first make a correction. The agenda says up to six food trucks, but it, the number is actually five. So that's just, that's just a little number, one food truck difference. I'll step down in case any members of the public want to speak, and I'll come back up to answer any questions.
Well, maybe your presentation might elicit a question or two. So why don't you go ahead, Cecilia?
Sure. So you directed, gave direction to the Town Council to look at making amendments to our zoning ordinance to relax some of the rules surrounding food trucks, particularly to allow more than the current numbers of food trucks that we allow to create, to enable sort of a temporary food truck area. But when you say temporary, it just means that it's a temporary activity, not necessarily a pilot program, since this is an amendment to our entire land, I mean, to our land use ordinance and not just a project. I've given you a staff report, and I'm wondering if you have any questions or you would like some background on how we regulate food trucks in Freeport in a nutshell. Okay.
Just to clarify, the memo says accessory use up to eight food trucks.
Yes, the memo has, we start, usually the memo template is that we add what was on the agenda, and that's a really good question. So when I heard the feedback from the Town Council, I was given a set of criteria, and I understood that one of the things you wanted to see us allow would be up to eight. So when I drafted the language to propose it to the Planning Board, it went in as eight. But during the public hearing that the Planning Board had and the discussion, they agreed that five would be more adequate. So it's coming to you as five, which is, you have to keep reading until the end of the report. So, sorry for the confusion on that.
Thanks. It's our process at work.
Yeah, so when food trucks, I mean, food trucks in Freeport are allowed usually as a temporary activity in any zoning district. But there are certain zoning districts that we allow them as accessory uses. So right now, our current standard is that you can have one in certain districts, primarily just this commercial district one and the nature-based art overlay. You could always have that one food truck as an accessory use to a principal use, which is whatever would be your primary business or other use of the property. However, there is an exemption that allows up to three, up to three times per year, up to three days. And we're kind of expanding on that exemption by allowing up to five for up to six consecutive months. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
I have a quick clarifying question. So I'm looking at the zoning map.
So I'm looking at the zoning map with the memo. Is that, are those, the zones this would apply to, or?
Right, so, yes, yes. And let me just also clarify another thing, not to, because it is pretty restrictive. So the zones on that staff memo on the map that are hashed, those are the ones where it's allowed as an accessory use to any permitted use. The other ones that are just in gray, which is the MDA, MB, the industrial one, and a couple of other districts, it's allowed as accessory to artisan food and beverage. So unless you have something like a brewery or a distillery, you know, you would, you would not be able to have a food truck as an accessory use. That's how I interpret it. Yeah.
And for members of the public who may not be reading the whole memo, Cecilia, could you just articulate very briefly the process that this particular item went through with the planning board, public hearings, and how long it's been cooking through the process?
Yes, so you gave direction, maybe in January, so the planning board met once and had a discussion, and then we went into a public hearing on the following meeting.
Great.
There was no notices mailed out, because this is not split particular to one district, so we did not send out letters to everyone like we do usually in certain other types of zoning.
It was on the agenda for two public meetings before tonight, tonight's public hearing.
Yes, there was one public meeting, I mean, there was a discussion item, and then it went to public hearing on the following meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Other questions from council or anybody else? Please make your way to the podium.
I'm Thais Delosreyas, Ellen Athena's Cantina, and we're planning the first food truck park in Freeport. Initially, when we brought it to your attention, December 19th of last year, our goal was to initially start with eight food trucks in that 22 space parking lot. And after a lot of going back and forth with the numbers of how easily we could fit these trucks in there with the space that we currently had, we figured out that eight food trucks, no matter whether it was in our property or anywhere down on Route 1, would be just too much. And we figured that out by the traffic flow, the parking, just to be able to keep people safe, we just figured that just putting that was too much. So when we came before the planning board last month, we brought up, we requested that it be lower to five food trucks, so it's more manageable, because going through the whole project and putting everything together, it just felt that eight would get out of hand. It wouldn't allow us a proper ability to get everything situated and figure out how we can properly do this without any mistakes or any issues that's going to endanger customers or anybody else, especially with the parking lot that we have. Yes, a lot of parking spaces, but still, we just want to be able to see how it flows. And five food trucks is a lot, so that's how we went, and we asked for the permission to lower them, and planning board was willing to bring and agree to bring that down to five. Initially, we went in big, you know, so, and it took us a few months to just kind of plan everything and just do it the right way, to where we don't have many gaps or issues or mistakes that come along the way. So after all of that, we decided to come up with a mock-up plan that would show exactly how everything is going to be placed, and obviously, everything is not to scale, so I'm not a professional, but we did the best that we could to be able to give people an idea, to be able to enter and to have emergency accessibility in the park and emergency exit. So we just tried to, our best way to do that was to cut down the amount of food trucks we had. And if other places decide to have something similar to this, it allows it to be a little bit controlled. So it's, I am very happy to where we are right now. I mean, we've, we came before you December 19th, we're now April 1st, and we've gotten pretty far with this, and I'm very happy with how everyone has helped move it along. And us, myself and my husband Adam, would like to thank you for pushing this as fast as we've gotten it done, which is pretty amazing. You guys have all been phenomenal, planning board, zoning, and town council. So we're just hoping that tonight we can bring this to fruition and make it, you know, see where 2024 summer brings us to Freeport and get a feel of what people think about it. Just going to bring in a whole new life, a new nightlife aspect for Freeport. We're going to be operating mostly at nighttime. We had to shift some hour issues because of, we are in a area where we have doctor's offices in our space, so any shift in parking and a lot of crowds can be stressful for offices and patients. So we decided, and we all came into an agreement, that an evening time operation could be very beneficial to Freeport. So we, yeah, so we're just hoping that this can happen and move forward and see where it goes. So we just wanted to give an idea what it's going to look like, and, you know, so, do you have any questions?
Thanks, Thais, thank you for your energy and your enthusiasm and vision to make this happen.
Absolutely. Well, Freeport is worth it. Thank you.
Other members of the public who would like to comment during the public hearing? All right, so I think we will close the public hearing and bring the discussion up to the council. Questions, comments from councilors?
I have a question, and this might go back to Cecilia. It goes to Councilor Benoist's question about the zones. We had some conversation when this idea first came to us a couple of months ago, and then before it went to the planning board, about whether something like this might be allowed within the Village Commercial One district, whether as a special activity permit, temporary activity permit or something. Can you just clarify where we stand with food trucks in Village Commercial One? Because that's not identified on the map.
So they're not allowed as an accessory use, like they are for the other districts that are on that map, sorry, too many to name. So, but they are allowed as a temporary, with a temporary activity permit. So if somebody has, having an event, you know, they could request to have the food trucks there, but it's not, you know, something that is by right always there. So, yeah, so that's kind of the difference.
So with, with this change, where we are talking about temporary activity, where you can get up to five food trucks with a temporary activity code, is there already within Village Commercial One a limit to how many food trucks you can have with a temporary activity permit?
I don't usually issue those permits, so I'm not really familiar. I don't...
Three.
Okay.
Okay.
Our food truck experts.
Four years.
Yeah, so, so we, you know, these changes do not apply to VC1. Nothing changes on VC1 or any other district that does not already allow them as a necessary use. If the council is interested in exploring that further, then you could send, you know, give that direction to the planning board. I think we would want to, you know, develop some further standards or, you know, be clear on what you're looking for. For instance, if somebody were to make, reutilize an empty parking lot to do it, then it wouldn't have restroom facilities, so if it were something that would be going on for six months, then, you know, what kind of performance standards we would want to have there. But it's...
I had the same question, too, but it seems like what we were trying to do was make it so we could get it through for the trial period this year and then move it forward and do more work if we wanted to move it potentially to downtown.
Yeah, and I always tell people, you know, this applies to all the zoning districts, so it's not just for one person's idea. It could, you know, anyone in these districts as an accessory use could come forward, so it's not limited to just one business, one parcel, one food truck area, and it's not temporary. I mean, this is a change to the land use ordinance, so unless you come back to us next year and say, hey, we really didn't like this idea, which you can, you know, we want you to repeal it, or honestly repeal because it's not an ordinance, but repeal the change, we can do that, too, so.
Other questions from the council before we take action? Councilor Pillsbury, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordained that proposed amendments to Section 501, temporary activity in Section 5 to 6A, food trucks of the Freeport zoning ordinance, to increase the number of food trucks allowed as an accessory use up to five. Food trucks for a maximum period of six months contingent on securing a temporary activity permit be approved.
Second. All right, been ordained and second. I guess with a public hearing, we have ordination and not order. Sorry, don't need to make light of it. Any other questions before we take a vote? That's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the action?
Aye.
Any opposed? Looks like we carry six to zero. Congratulations, thank you very much for that. All right, our next item is item number 92-24. This is another public hearing to consider action relative to the proposed adoption of a property tax assistance program to provide limited property tax and rental rebates to seniors living in Freeport. We'll open up the public hearing. This is an item that's been at work for a number of months, largely thanks to Councilor Fornier for getting it going, and for staff and our finance director for working out the details. So we have a public hearing to introduce to the community a property tax safety valve for seniors that meet the criteria to apply for such. And anyway, if anybody's here to comment or ask questions about that, this is the public hearing. This would be the chance to ask your questions. Jessica going to be here, or you have the details?
I have the details.
Okay, so the manager will be able to answer those questions of the program, as well as other members of the council. Anyone wish to comment during public hearing? Oh, there's Jessica sitting right over there. Okay, I don't see any hands up. I don't have any hands up online. I think we'll close the public hearing and bring the conversation up to the council. Questions for the manager on the program? We've had it outlined very neatly in our package. It's about time, some might say.
I have one question, and it's not meant to hold up what we're doing tonight, but just for the future. I've been trying to get a sense, and I don't think I've been clear with the question that I had asked the ordinance committee.
Mine have been, but...
I'd love to see how it might look for a household, a typical household, maybe one or two types of households, to say, this is what the tax bill is, this is what the state program offers, and this is what the town layers on top of that. And all the formulas are there. I think it would be just nice to show, you have a $3,000 tax bill, the state gives you $700, we could be $500, whatever the numbers are. But again, I don't want to hold it up tonight, but that might be something nice to share in the future.
So I can tell you that whether you adopt this tonight or in two weeks, it does nothing to the rollout of the program. The program won't be rolled out until...
Next year.
Next year.
Yeah, so...
Because we're in the middle of our fiscal year now.
Yep, so I totally missed that one. I put the information down at the bottom, and I know you asked for it, and then when you started it, and I was like, yeah. It shouldn't take very long for men and I to come up with that. We'd be happy to do that, and if that would make you feel more comfortable, well, not even more comfortable, but have knowledge, happy to do that, and we could easily just put it on for a quick discussion and vote next time if you'd feel better.
Councilor Lawrence, did you have a particular?
Well, I think we should get it done tonight. I don't think it's going to change much. It's nice to have the information, but I don't think it'll change much. We went, as the ordinance committee, we went through this, I'd say, stringently. We started very high, or we modeled after another town's ordinance, and we, they were very high. We backed it down quite a bit because we didn't want to be stuck with a huge bill, if you will. So we knocked it down. The, you have to qualify, you have to be a resident of Freeport for five years, a homestead. Not that you have to have a homestead property, but you have to have lived in Freeport for five years. You have to be retired per the federal retirement criteria. You don't have to be retired, but you have to meet the criteria to be a retiree. And the levels of benefits are based on the housing poverty level, and at 250% of the poverty level, the maximum benefit is $300, at 225, it's $400, and at 200, it's $750. So it was, we can change these numbers, they can go up, they can go down, but we didn't know what we were getting into and what the demand would be, so we kept it at this level. And there's a cap. I don't remember what we put the cap in, but there's a cap, and then everything would be prorated based on that cap. So if we get a lot of requests, everything comes down a little bit.
I think we have...
Yep.
I think we actually have to set a cap. There's a recommended cost that if we looked at the prior tax stabilization program, that this could be our anticipated cap, but I think that number's high. I think we should actually set a cap, and I think the way the language is written is that future councils will set a cap every year during the budget process. So I advise us to take a look at that and figure out what we want to use. The number quoted in there is 191,000. I think that's too high, especially for this budget year. The other two things I want to point out, that we had significant debate at the ordinance committee level, I think, and I'd like to hear what everyone else thinks up here, $750,000 in assets is one of the qualifiers, no greater, not greater than that. I think that's still a high number. I'd like to hear other people's thoughts on that. And then the other pieces that we debated is the five years of residency, and just as I'm reading it now, do we want to clarify, is that continuous, or is that in totality? So if someone had lived in Freeport, this wasn't something that came up at the ordinance committee, but it just prompted me by reading it this, this last time. So those are the questions I think I'd like to hear what other people think before we just kind of move on on this.
Just to clarify, $750,000, not including the primary residence.
Feedback on those points raised by Councilor Pillsbury?
As a jumping off point to, since no one just went for it, I was thinking something more as a cap in line of like $100,000 or $125,000 for the first program year.
A cap on the program or on the...
Not the assets, not the asset measure, right.
The total outlay for the town to support this program in year one.
Was 750, I mean, what was the number?
750, yeah.
700, it was the cap. What was, what was, you said the cap of 125. Was that...
So the cap, you're talking about the total program cap of 125, 100 to 125,000 for the budget year. 750 is the individual max award.
Right.
And 100% arbitrary.
Right, well, the 750 was the assets, right? 125, does that cover, did we look at what our possible bill would have been at with these?
Yeah, I think Matt was kind of speaking to that.
Okay.
So if you recall, when we went through the process, we talked about the fact that the data could not be spliced the way we would want it to be.
Right.
And so we made a lot of assumptions, and those assumptions came to a point of like $181,000, $190,000. And, but again, the data, the way the data is grouped for each of the things we looked at was completely different, so that is truly like, maybe we got it on the wall, we're not even close to the bullseye.
Okay.
I would support Councilor Pillsbury's cap of $100,000 as a, it's the first year of the program, try it out, see where it goes. The other related number to that $191,000, if we went with a full amount, shifts the tax burden and be a cost of about $35.85 on a median household for everybody who's not in the program. So if we cut that down to 100,000, it's not quite half of that, but it'd be more like, you know, 18 bucks or something.
you know, 18 bucks or something for the median house. So I would support that.
Council Smith?
Did you have a recommendation about the asset cap? I too thought that was a bit high, given that it doesn't include the primary residence, and I think the whole goal is that it's exactly the issue, that it's somebody's primary residence that is sort of outsized in terms of its value that we're trying to compensate for. But aside from that, it does sound like you would want to have lower. And I guess that's where I'm trying to figure out, where we're setting the limit based on household income of not greater than 250% of the federal poverty level, but to then say you could have assets of up to 750,000, I don't know how those two align or if there was conversation about that.
There was a little bit. We realized that assets are a wide range of things, and they could be liquid or illiquid. And it's tough if you have a certain number of vehicles or multiple boats or things that you wouldn't necessarily be able to come down and use to pay your property tax bill. That makes it challenging. The other communities we looked at had a much higher limit, you know, I think Cumberland's was $2 million. So that didn't seem right and feel right to us. 750 was a point to put in for discussion. My personal preference is, my opinion is that that number's still high, so I welcome discussion on it, but this is a starting point for us to have the conversation.
Was there any speculative number about the number of residents who might actually participate? Do we have any ballpark on that?
So we do. I'm just looking to pull that up. So based on census data, we have 1,247 homes that have a household, the householder is 65 or older, which is the oldest that we, that's the last catch group. 1,003 of them were owner occupied and 244 were renters, because remember, the program by statute has to cover both. So we use the assumption that every household would apply. We also did the breakdown between the 200%, 200% of poverty and below was one of the bands, 225 was the other one, 225 to 250 was the last one. We, whoops. So those bands are not 100% accurate to the, we did some smoothing to make that work to get into the scaled values. So if we take the household and the different potential steps that they could qualify for in terms of which scale, and then we also applied it to an average, we used a median home value of 430,500 and a gross average rent of 100, I'm sorry, $1,548. Those again came from national numbers for Freeport, so that they're probably three or four years old, and then we put those all through the number, and that's where we came up with 190-ish thousand.
Right, but the question I had was how many households do we think would actually expend up to that 193,000? How many applicants?
Yeah, give me a sec, I've got that. Based on the numbers, we would have 396 eligible owners, 96 eligible renters.
All right, that's helpful. I guess just talking about a program that's going to directly affect 500 residents, it's not insignificant at all.
Sophie, I think you looked at some other towns, and did you have a number of how much they spent on their programs?
So the issue with the towns that I was able to talk with, the ones that had the better programs from our viewpoint, were the ones that have been doing it the longest. And when they started out, they started out with small pots of money, 50,000, 75,000, because it took an awful long time to get people to be aware of it. Given the fact that we had the stabilization program, I have a sense that once the notice goes out that this program exists, we probably would have a lot more interest in it than they did. But, you know, at this point, I think there is a mechanism within the ordinance that if you start it out smaller, it's one year, it's one amount, and then you prorate it, and then you'll know after that how many applicants you have. That's one way. The other way of looking at it is, we allocate what we think is a decent number. If there's money left according to the ordinance, it stays there, so you have to appropriate less money the following year. So you're only going to expend up to the use, which...
Right. I guess it's that last point that I'm inclined to leave it as proposed and see what happens, but I'm not really firm on that to, you know, encourage anybody to not make a motion if we want to make an edit too, so.
I think we should keep it where it is, just as a starting point.
I think a lot, and I think this goes to what you were asking for, Dan, in terms of what those examples were. I think a lot of this is going to depend on the marketing material of like how we're getting that word out, how we're explaining it. And I'm thinking about the rebate program that we sort of went back and forth on where we rolled it out, it didn't get a lot of use, we then had so much interest that we had to sort of back off. So I think a lot of it is going to come down to the communication piece and how robustly we're putting it out there to the community.
I have a methods question. Would we, in terms of prorating it, would we get all applications and then disperse the funds all at once? Yeah.
The mechanism in the ordinance says that we get all the applications in like November, and council would actually make a decision January-ish, and the funds would be dispersed after people have completely paid their property tax or, yeah, after people have completely paid their property tax.
Dan?
I should have caught this at ordinance, but regarding the timeframe, there's a sentence in Section 6 that talks about our second meeting in August, and we don't often have two meetings in August, so we should move that to a different month, maybe September or...
So maybe the... Okay.
So we have a couple of suggested changes. We also have some momentum that we're trying to maintain, and we've also heard from the manager that a decision tonight is not critical to this being effective in the next fiscal year. So we can read the Be It Ordered and take a vote, or we can find out if we want to try and make some edits first and take it up again.
One point that I think is correct is that we don't need to set the cap, the budget cap, tonight, right? We can establish the program and then decide later how much money we want to put into the fund, so that discussion of this 100,000 is 191,000 doesn't need to be done tonight.
Right. I think it's the asset test, that's the edit.
I just want to sort of echo support that I think the 750,000 does seem high, but I'm not really sure how we would decide a different number. I feel unclear. There seems to be a lot of feelings that that's a high number, but no clear way to remedy that, so.
Yeah, it's kind of hard if you, let's say you own two pieces of property, right, not necessarily here, but if it's an asset, it's in another city, but it's not producing any capital. Now you can't get it, the only way to pay your bills is to sell this, which, I don't know, I think 750 is a good number to start with.
I think my concern, and Matt, you alluded to this, is the, it's the personal property piece about whether it's, if it's a commercial fishing vessel, for example, or something else that is tied to income that would, you would not be looking to liquidate. So that's sort of where I'm stuck, because I don't really know what the appropriate number is until we get the data to see what this, sort of the first batch of applications looks like.
I will just, I mean, I'm fine leaving it at 750, that's what the recommendation out of ordinance was. I don't believe we're going to get much data back to help inform this decision down the road. This will always be a tough decision because we're not going to, the program is not going to go and fact check and check on everyone's assets and take a, it'll be at a station, and so there could be consequence to that, but it's not going to be provide a list of all your assets, and then we'll tally it, and then we'll see how many people above and below came in to try to apply. So we won't get data back on this to change the number.
Well, I'd hope we verify the 750 limit, and if we're going to verify it, then we have a chance to at least get a broad generalization of what those assets are.
We talked about this, Sophie can speak to it, I think that would be a very challenging task.
So in other communities, they simply ask them to attest to it, because there's really no way for me to tell you how much people have in retirement or in their savings account, their checking account, under their mattress. You know, we just, we don't know that, if they have property in other states. So this is truly an honor system.
In the banking world, there's a simple document called a personal financial statement that if you are borrowing money, you're often asked to provide that, and you have to sign your name with an attestation to it, so I would hope we'd at least get that.
Yeah, that's the idea, but it's really an honor system until you get, so if you have a higher one, you have less, I think.
Yeah, I mean, technically there are the consequences for not being truthful on a personal financial statement, but not that we'd be enforcing any of that. Okay, so we're at least going to ask for a PFS for each, okay.
Well, we'll take a PFS and make it the town of Freeport's ask for that.
Yeah, yep. All right.
In the spirit of seeing if there's a compromise, would there be enough of us willing to go to 500,000 down from 750?
It's all the honor system, so I don't know what the difference is. I mean, we're down from 2 million, right? 750, I just, it's all honor. We could make it 100,000, but it would, and in today's environment, everything's more expensive. I mean, everything's going up, so like a million dollars 10 years ago, not a million dollars today. And I think going forward, 750,000 is going to start coming. So if we leave it where it is, we don't have to change it again, but we always can, that's an opportunity.
So I truly don't have an opinion about this, but I'm going to just offer a counterpoint because it's my job, I think. My counterpoint to that is, if you think about it, taking away your primary residence, you're talking about homes, you're talking about second pieces of land, you're talking about cash and stocks and bonds and all of those major assets. So what you're doing with this program is you're creating a tax shift. So when you do that, you're asking people who don't qualify for the program to pay for it. So when I think about, the number that I started with at 2 million was because a counselor spitballed that in the beginning of conversation, and so as a good town manager, I listen to my bosses and put things in. But when you think about, what would you reasonably expect somebody living at the poverty level to have in assets? And what are we asking people who are working or just over the poverty level to be willing to pay to subsidize somebody else? And again, I have no particular opinion.
But the other counterpoint to that is, these are people that have been working all their lives, and they've acquired a certain amount of things, and they've been paying their taxes, and now they're having trouble, and they're, that's, and that's why we're doing this whole program, right?
I think we're doing the program to allow people to stay in their community that they've called home, and if they have a financial hardship, this is a program that will help them. I think if we start talking about who has what, I think Sophie's point is really well taken. This is, we are shifting, the town is going to collect this money, and it's going to come from other people to support this program, and we need to be mindful of that, and in light of that in the last bit of our conversation, I'd be open to having a lower asset size to start with.
I can see going to half a million in terms of asset. I mean, I think that's reasonable. Again, part of this is the, I take your point chip about it's going to be whatever people say anyway, but I think part of it is, how is it seen by the rest of the town, and how is it accepted, you know, in terms of what are we offering to this particular group of people that is being paid for by the other folks?
All right, so we have an item to read here shortly, but we can entertain a motion to make an amendment as well. Chip, why don't you read the Be It Ordained so we get it on the record?
Be it ordained that the public, no, this is the wrong one, sorry. Be it ordained that the proposed adoption of the property tax assistance program, new Chapter 67 of the Freeport Code of Ordinances, provide limited property tax and rental rebates to seniors living in Freeport be approved.
Second.
Okay, who moved and seconded? That's as printed in the memo that's part of our package. Council Pilch?
Can I make an amendment to modify that in three places, two of which are administrative? One is on page two, Section 67-3, the maximum family household income shall be no more than 250% of the federal poverty level. So just adding the words "no more than." And then on the same page, following sentence, to change the asset limit from 750,000 to 500,000. And then lastly, on page three in Section 67-6, to change the timing from the second meeting in August to the second meeting in September.
Did you also want to address the contingent? And that's 67-3-2.
Yeah, right now it says for at least five years immediately preceding the date of application. Is that sufficient?
That says continuously.
Yeah, okay.
Section 67-1, it says, who have maintained a homestead in the town of Freeport for at least five years and meet the criteria established by this article. So I think we just need to clean it one way or the other, whichever way we're going to go.
So 67-3 override 67-1, or should we can add...
It just adds because it's criteria, further criteria, but we can try to clean that language.
Clarify.
Yeah.
The last five years.
For, yeah, so maintain that, so in 67-1, say who have maintained a homestead in the town of Freeport for the last five years. Or the immediately preceding five years, just to be consistent. So the four edits then.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's an amendment to what was presented in the report in our package. We'll vote on the amendment, then we'll take a vote on the full item. All those in favor of the amendment as just articulated by Council of Pilch?
Aye.
Are those opposed? Okay, five to one. All right, so with that amendment, the administrative changes and the adjustment in the maximum the adjustment in the maximum assets limit at 500,000, as reported by the applicant, we'll go ahead and vote on the amended item as read and seconded already. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, full vote carries, six to zero. Good conversation, folks. All right, our next item is item number nine, 3-24. This is the third of our public hearings this evening, and this is a public hearing on our capital program. Just a reminder for everyone listening and in the audience, the capital program is any town expenditure over $10,000 that has a useful life. So it's non, it's not related to consumable items, and it's not related to staff operations. It's related to what we would consider hard assets in the town, although many of the things that we purchase are, these days are also electronic and related to our network systems. So can't really touch those electrons, but they're in there as part of our capital plan. We've had numerous meetings on the capital program. And again, just to clarification, tonight's public hearing is on the capital program, which is a five-year plan that the council adopts and directs back to staff to provide some guidance and vision about where capital expenditures, which is a separate action, happen each year. The idea is that department heads are coming forward with capital plan suggestions for a particular year that reflect what we've been planning for in the capital program. Jessica, could you please come up and make a presentation on the capital program for '25 through '29, fiscal year '25 through '29?
Sure. I guess for, for this meeting and this purpose, what I would like to point out on the last page of the packet that I left you at the bar, shows proposed changes to the plan. Staff is proposing that we remove $20,000 appropriation for some communication dispatch upgrade. It was initially requested at 52,000. I'm dropping that to 32,000. When I've further reviewed the contract for this, that $20,000 portion is actually our annual maintenance cost, which is part of our operating budget. So you'll see it there. And then there's also a request to adjust the current year appropriation of the Bow Street drainage outfall. It's not to eliminate that project, it's to cover that project under existing funding from the Concord Gully Brook watershed appropriation that you do every year. We've been putting about 25,000 into that. With this year's $25,000 appropriation, we'd be at that $100,000 mark. So it kind of felt like, you know, why should we ask for another 100,000 when we've built it to be able to do projects like this? So you notice on this last page, the impact of the current year is a reduction of 100,000 to the plan. But the net change to the five-year plan is only a reduction of 50,000, because I am suggesting that we bump up replenishing that, so that if there's another project, you know, you're going to be around that 100,000 or more mark for projects that are impacted in the watershed. So it's just, you know, working on building that back up to an appropriate level for the next project that may come forth. Other than that, I'll leave it for council to ask questions, or the public to step up and...
All right, we have a public hearing on this, so if anyone has comments or questions about our FY '25 through '29 capital program, this would be the time to come up and ask your questions, or provide comments. The public hearing is open. Please come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and let us know what you're thinking.
We have people who know answers.
Okay. All right, well, certainly by far not the final opportunity to comment on our capital budget, but we'll close the public hearing now to keep this moving along. Questions from the council for the finance director.
Jessica, just to, on your last point, you mentioned that we're finding another source for that $100,000 for the drainage outfall. But you talked about replenishing the Concord Gully Brook. So are we changing that from what we would normally do as 25,000? Are we changing that number for this fiscal year?
So typically, there's an annual, or the last few years, there has been an appropriation of $25,000 that has gone into the Concord Gully Brook watershed restoration. And with this year's appropriation of, or proposed appropriation of 25,000, the balance in that reserve will be just over $100,000. And so where this project came forth on the Bow Street drainage, and the correction that's needed there, rather than ask for an outright appropriation of an additional 100,000, I felt it could fall under the Concord Gully Brook. The change for the future years, we, and we have done this, why, that's why I kind of corrected my phrase of typically. We, we've varied between a $25,000 and a $50,000 appropriation into the Concord Gully Brook watershed based on anticipated projects within it. So this, you know, that's certainly, the, the five-year component of that is not what gets appropriated. I am just making a recommendation of what will probably be placeholders for the five-year plan, that can obviously be discussed at the individual year levels when we get to the appropriation.
So those are future increases?
Those are future, it's changing future every other year. I think if you look at it, I'm suggesting 2026 go to 50,000, and I'm suggesting 2027 go to 50,000. Those were initially at 25. But then I go back in 2028 down to the 25,000.
Makes sense. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
My other question's more just for discussion up here at the council. The body cameras for the police, we talked a little bit about this at the police advisory committee, and I haven't discussed it with the chief, so apologies for springing on tonight. But the sense that I remember from that discussion was that there's not an immediate problem we're solving, there's not an immediate need, it seems like a good idea at some point, we've been talking about it for years. We think it would only benefit us, because we have faith that our officers are doing the right thing, and this would sort of be the proof we need in the event we needed it. But we haven't had a situation like that in recent memory. So the question is, is that something that's up for pushing out to a future year? Maybe the technology gets cheaper? Do we feel strongly about doing it now? We had some discussion last time, I think, about doing it for some of the officers, but not for all, but that, that gets complicated, too. So I'll just throw that out for discussion.
Could you remind me, did we give the department ARPA funds earlier for some of this?
Yep, not for body cameras.
No. No. And night vision.
If I could, you are, you are 100% correct, that we have an amazing police department that really focuses on community policing, and, and we haven't had an issue. My experience tells me that body cameras aren't just for issues. Body cameras in the department that I came from before, they were a way to supervise when supervisors aren't there at night, or weekends, or wherever. If you look at accreditation, they required us to pull a certain number of body cam footage of incidents to ensure that people acted the way that, within policy, and didn't need remediation. When you consider that Nate is taking people oftentimes that have no experience at all, that go to the academy and get what I think is a significant amount of field training here, but is still relatively a small amount of field training, and we put them on the streets. And then somebody calls because the officer isn't friendly. Well, you know, it's really nice to be able to go to the videotape and say, are there things that we could correct here? Or are, was this okay? So I, I do think that body cameras are important from the standpoint of being able to have a good level of accountability to the community, good remediation and feedback to officers to catch them with small behaviors, and also a way, quite frankly, in the 13 years I was in a community, or 12 and a half years I was in a community that had body cameras, we pulled those, I pulled them numerous times, great department there, too. And most of the time, it completely exonerated the officer. And so when you suggest that we push these, I would suggest that if you want to find savings here, we go back with Nate and talk about how we could legitimately phase them in, and maybe we don't, maybe we need enough for the maximum number who are working plus a spare, or something like that. But I would strongly advocate for body cameras. And I want to be clear, it has, it is not due to a lack of confidence in our department. We have an amazing department.
John, the cruisers as well, right?
Yep.
We, we have audio currently, right, cruisers end on the body?
Yes, we do. Yep. I will say that audio is a much different experience than living through the tape.
I think we should do this now. I mean, the world is changing, and this provides a little protection for our officers. So I, I'm not in favor of moving this out.
The document we have in front of us is our capital budget program, so we will have another bite at the actual FY '25 capital budget expenditure. So we, we can take a look at that again. But again, this is for planning uses, and to provide feedback directly back to the staff, through the manager, about where we're going to be. And just a reminder for folks watching and looking at, you know, 1.9 or almost $2 million in capital spending coming up in FY '25, and all of that is paid for by reserves. So the capital purchases made by your town are not carried on your tax bill. They're from good fiscal planning and reserves, and, and finding other ways to fund revenue for capital improvements. So just a reminder that while we're all watching our tax bill, the capital plan expenditures actually are not carried by that, by that final mill rate. Other questions for the finance director?
Jessica, can you just clarify, this goes back to, to what you were talking about in terms of the changes. Where the, the Bow Street drainage outfall, what, what is the location of that when we're talking about that?
Sure, that is on Article Six.
Yep.
The comprehensive town improvements.
The, the actual location.
Oh.
And maybe that's better for Earl to explain.
It, it is actually, that's my project, actually, right now. It's not Earl's quite yet.
Okay.
So that actually goes behind 43 Bow Street, under School Street. It goes from a private residence that we have an easement on, across town property, under School Street, and to the Bow Street Drainage Pond, behind the Bow Street Market.
Right.
In, in Gorman Park.
Right. Which then drains to Frost Gully, right? I guess that's my question, is we're talking about whether it's Frost Gully or Concord Gully Brook?
So, yeah, so the reason...
Whether it's a holistic watershed improvement?
Yep. So the reason why, if you're asking why I combined it with the Concord Gully is because the narrative of the Concord Gully appropriation over the last couple of years was inclusive of Frost Gully and Concord Gully improvements.
Got it. That was what I was trying to clarify. Thank you.
I made sure that before I made the recommendation.
All right, any other questions on the capital program before we move it forward? All right. Counselor Pernoy, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the proposed capital program for FY 2025 be approved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
No, any opposed? Six to zero, Chris. Great, thank you. Great conversation. Thank you very much, Jessica.
Thank you.
As always. All right, our next item is 94-24. We're finished with our public hearings. Now we're going to be setting a public hearing to consider action relative to setting a public hearing regarding amendments to Chapter 66, Cannabis Establishment Licensing Ordinance. Counselor Smith, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for April 23, 2024, at the town council meeting, starting at 6:00 PM in Freeport Council Chambers, 30 Main Street. Relative amendments, relative to amendments to Chapter 66, Cannabis Establishment Licensing Ordinance.
Second.
All right, been moved and seconded, and we have our planner, former interim town manager Caroline Pelletier on Zoom to explain and set the context for this. Again, we're not taking action on this this evening, we're just setting a public hearing for making an amendment to the licensing. Caroline?
So we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting. We have the new land use standards for cannabis, and you recently adopted a licensing ordinance. As we heard at the public hearing, we were made aware that one of our establishments had multiple caregivers in their facility, which would thereby require multiple licenses. We have been through their first round of licensing, and for cannabis cultivation facility licenses, you had a cap of four. And in the initial priority application period, we have received five applications. So what you have before you, I'm actually going to take you backwards a little bit. So if you start on page seven, you will see under 9A1 Cannabis Cultivation Facility, there's a proposed amendment to change the amount of, number of licenses from four to six. That left us one extra license of wheelroom, in case there was another one out there that we weren't aware of. There is no change proposed for cannabis manufacturing and processing facility, because you set that at four, and we have only received two. When we made the initial ordinance, one of the things we did not expect was to get more licenses in the priority period than we had set the number for. So since you were going in and changing this, we clarified the process. So on page seven, you have the number increased for the number of licenses. And then you will see that on page five, we added a clause in there, so if there are extra licenses at any point in time in the priority category, you'll follow a lottery, just like you do for non-priority applicants. And then on page six, the future availability of licenses, this just acknowledges that should you ever change, including with this change, the number of licenses, you'll follow the same notification and kind of application process for applicants with putting the notice on the website, putting the notice on the paper, and give a window for people to apply. I've been answering the questions that you have.
Questions for Caroline?
Eric?
Just to clarify, this is, this is still, we're only dealing with caregivers still. We're not yet addressing the concern that was voiced related to the dispensary licenses, correct?
Correct. So I have this side note I did here from the applicant. I do think they're going to work on their own to bring an amendment forward. There was a little bit of confusion. They thought they could just amend the licensing ordinance, but they would actually need to make an application to amend the land use ordinance first. I've been trying to get some additional information from the Licensing Office of Cannabis Policy. I have not heard back, so there's still a little bit of unknown about dispensary. But based upon council discussions, that property owner is taking the path to make application to the planning board.
Joan?
So I think, I think the answer is yes, but with the new number of cannabis cultivation facility licenses to six, is that, we know that's sufficient for what the businesses are looking for?
Well, we thought we were sufficient the first time, and we weren't. So this, this will address everything that's been submitted under the priority application period. period, plus one, just in case there is another caregiver out there operating in Freeport that we don't know about that wanted to apply. We weren't aware that there were multiple licensed caregivers in these establishments. You know, we've been talking about this, I think, since pre-pandemic, and, you know, the land use standards took quite a while, and then it's been sitting there. So cannabis keeps evolving, and as we talk about this tonight, there's more changes to the rules in front of the state. So I think you're going to see us back again on this at some point.
Yeah, was this in response to a change that was made while we were doing our ordinance?
I'm not entirely sure if it, the caregivers have been like evolving as we go. I don't know if there was a point in time where you could only have one. You know, when we started all this, there was a vocal desire by our two current businesses that they thought they were going to switch to adult use. The markets have just changed, so they now have multiple caregivers. Whether or not that itself changed, I'm not sure. The other issue that Eric asked about is definitely something that came into play while we've been talking about all of this. It was a change in state law.
Right, but I thought it was a change in state law that also changed the caregiver response, or the, how they were counted. I thought that's what it was, and that-
Yeah, I think that's changed a few times, I'm just not sure how it fits within our timeline.
Okay, everybody set? All right, so we're just setting the public hearing, we can have, if anybody has questions, you can feed them through the manager, and we'll try and get those teed up for the public hearing at our next meeting, which will be on April 23rd. Just a reminder, we have two workshops in between now and our next meeting in April. All right, so item number 9424 has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of setting the public hearing?
Aye.
Actually, did we read that?
Yes.
We did, okay. Just want to make sure, great. All in favor? Aye, six to zero, Chris. Our next item is number 95-24, and I'm going to recommend that we table this item. We had communication this week with the business owner involved in this item, who's out of the country, and really felt like the, wanted to have a participation in person with the facilities committee before taking any action on, that might be proposed by this item. So I'll ask, that we go ahead and table number 95-24?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item's tabled. Next item is 96-24, to consider action relative to authorization of the Main Career and Technical Education Region 10 warrant and notice of election. This is an ordinary and routine item that we have to move, since we, RSU participates with the Main Career and Technical Education Region 10 warrant. Counselor Pilch, I'm sorry, Counselor, yeah, yeah, Pilch, please read the be it ordered.
Be it ordered that the Town Council authorize the Main Career and Technical Education Region 10 warrant and notice of election.
Second.
All right, that item is in our packet, any questions about it? This is the tech school for the high school students, Region 10 over in Brunswick. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next up is item number 97-24. As we get from time to time throughout the year, this is an action related to the use of town property by an organization in our community. This one happens to be Memorial Park. We're back down to Matt, please read the be it ordered.
Sure. Be it ordered that the use of town property request from Freeport Farmers Market for use of Memorial Park on Fridays from May 31st to September 27th, 2024 be approved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. The process involves groups wanting to use public property coming to talk with our clerk, who keeps the master calendar for various activities in our public assets. Memorial Park is popular, and so it's important that folks come forward in a timely manner if they have particular items. There's a minor amount of information required to make that reservation, including proving your organization that you exist, and, and that you can obtain in some insurance, since you're operating on public property. Those items are usually met and verified by the clerk, and so this item tonight is for the Farmers Market for their 2024 season. Any questions for Chris? Dan?
Just a clarification on the handwritten note on page two, where it talks about the stage. It says music will take place on the permanent stage near the fence, provided by and maintained by, well, I believe that's provided by and maintained by the town of Freeport. So just to clarify.
Right. We don't have a permanent stage, but if there will be, there will be a stage.
Yeah, there'd be a stage.
There's one that was put up there last year, thanks to Earl, he's left. So that will, yeah, that'll be reinstalled. It just sits on the ground, it's not drilled into the ground. All right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, six to zero. All right, our last item on the action agenda is to consider action relative to contribution of 25,000 from the ARPA funds to support the Tedford Housing Capital Campaign for a new shelter and homeless services facility in Brunswick. We've had numerous presentations from Tedford at previous meetings. Through some communication, they indicated they actually did not have a person who could come this evening, because they're out at other towns, making presentations, and felt like they had already explained things here. There was a piece in the local newspaper on March 29th that explained their capital campaign and the broad regional support that they're receiving for that, as well as a significant Congressional Delegated Spending Award that they recently received, courtesy of our Congressional delegation. We have, Sophie, how much left in the ARPA account?
Last, at last check, it was 53,000 dollars.
So we've had conversations about the contribution, and this was scaled at the size of our community. Any questions before we take action on this?
No, but I think we should reduce the amount to $10,000, and the remainder of the ARPA funds be put into the town capital improvement program, because this year is going to be a tough year. Do you want to make the-
Yeah, you want to make the-
After we read this?
Right, we should read it in first. Chip, we're up to you.
Be it ordered that the contribution of 25,000 from American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to the Tedford Shelter Capital Campaign for a new shelter located in Brunswick be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and you wanted to make an amendment?
I do want to make an amendment. I, I recommend, I make the amendment that we reduce the amount to $10,000 and with, to, to help Tedford, and the remainder of the ARPA funds, all of them go into our capital program to help the town with taxes and whatever else we need, in particular our-
You, you can't say it's to reduce taxes.
Oh, can't say you do, okay.
You could say, based on our previous discussion-
Yep.
I think the pot you were looking at was for us to address accessibility issues.
Accessibility issues and-
And trails and-
Okay, so, reduce the amount to 10,000, with the remainder going to accessibility issues and trail management and building.
I'll second that, so we can vote on it.
Okay.
Sheriff, will there be any public comment permitted?
Not on this item. We've had numerous discussions already, and it's an action item for this evening.
I do know that we had the Social Racial Equity Committee submitted a letter of support for this. Also, Andrew Lardy, who is the Executive Director of Tedford, also submitted a request. So we have seen, obviously, from Andrew Lardy, but we have seen some groups in town vocalize support.
Sheriff, has a minute of comment on the motion to reduce the amount, correct? That's, that's come up here tonight as a first occasion.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct.
I think Mr. Lawrence pointed out how money doesn't go very far anymore, and a capital campaign contributing 25,000 to it is not a huge amount.
Thanks, Bob, we're, we're not in a-
I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, so we have an amendment to reduce the amount to $10,000. All those in favor of the amendment?
I, I was just going to say that I, I'm in favor of keeping it in, in 25,000, mostly because this is sort of already a compromise amount. I think, I think compared to what other towns have been contributing to this project, I think this is a relatively small amount, and I think it's relatively small because that's what we have, it's based on what we have left in the ARPA funds. So I'm, I'm aware that those funds are diminishing, but I think 25,000 is, is the minimum that we should be giving.
Going to say this again, I know we're about to vote, but when we had our presentation from Andrew, he did mention that 18 people from Freeport did call. So I think honestly, if we look at $25,000 for 18 Freeporters, that's not a lot of money. And I think it's 18 or who called, there's still probably plenty more who didn't.
I still think we should reduce it, because we've been giving, it's been a little bit here, and a little bit there, and a little bit here, and a little bit over where, and we haven't put anything into our capital program from ARPA once, once. And we're giving it all away, we've given a lot to the community services, that is for this purpose that we're doing here. So I'm not saying not support it, but, and we're all concerned, you know, we, we were talking about giving money back to our taxpayers and having our taxpayers that are not part of the tax assistant program picking up the bill for that, and now we're giving money away that could help our town. I mean, and I understand Tedford helps, helps our town, but I'm, ARPA is, we should have done other things with ARPA, but we didn't, and we did it a little bit at a time, and now we're here with a little bit left. That, that's my argument for this, and-
I certainly concur with that argument, and, and support Counsel Lawrence's effort to use the remaining amount, and we have a ticking clock, and that we have until the end of September of 2024 to actually obligate those funds, and then by September, or maybe it's December of 2026, to actually have them spent. So we can't just keep kicking it around, I agree. I think, the request from Tedford was for the 25,000, they've had a substantial capital campaign that's been successful throughout the region, it's not just for Brunswick, and it's not just for Brunswick residents. But I, I completely agree that using the, the balance of the ARPA funds towards something that can take a tax burden away from some, some expenditure that we're going to tangle with is, is the best move for the last bit. So we have an amendment in place, and been moved and seconded to reduce the amount from 25 to $10,000. All those in favor of the amendment? And any opposed?
Aye.
Five to one, the amendment does not pass. So we're back to the original printed item as read by Counsel Lawrence. All those in favor of item number 97-24 as read? Sorry, 98, 98-24, I read the wrong item. Any opposed? Five to one.
John, can I just make a comment? So I think Sophie, if, as we're, as we're nearing the end of the ARPA funding, it'd be great for us to have just a quick look back as to what we spent, because we actually have spent it in a variety of manners, including things that offset projects out of the capital budget. So I think it would just be a great refresher for everyone to look back and see the great use that this went to, to support a wide swath of our town and the initiatives within the town.
Also, I know we had discussed this earlier, where we had obligated funds that had not spent, so I'm certainly interested in update on that to make sure we do re-obligate if necessary.
Right.
Yes, and yes.
Okay, that's the end of our action items. We have two other business items this evening. We're going to have a presentation from our Sustainability Coordinator, Mehdi Smith, and then we'll have a conversation about next steps we can take on the Housing Task Force list of recommendations that were presented at our last meeting. So I think we're ready for the presentation. Mehdi?
Thank you very much. So my name is Mehdi Smith, I'm the Sustainability Coordinator for the town of Freeport. I don't have any slides tonight, my intention was just to announce that the Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board has completed a final draft of the Climate Action Plan. There's some paper copies back here, if you want to take one on your way out, and it's, oh, great, it's right in front of you, so anyone in the room, you're welcome to pick up a copy here at Town Hall, and you can also see one at the Freeport Community Library and on our website, freeportclimateaction.org. So again, my, my intention tonight is just kind of to make the announcement that the draft is, is out there and ready for your review and consideration, and as we kind of launch into the, the council process with this important planning document, you know, I'd love to hear any questions you have tonight or later on, and, and get some clarification on what you'd like from us moving forward. So I don't want to repeat everything that you're going to find in the plan itself, but just give you a little bit of context and grounding as you dive into the document, you're able to understand where the board was coming from. So the Climate Action Plan has been underway for about a year and a half now, and that has taken the shape of data analysis by the Greater Portland Council of Governments. So the town contracted with them to help facilitate the planning process and really lead data analysis. So their work, which was, was, was great, and we thank them for, for all they did for this important process. Their work was focused on two things, understanding where emissions are coming from in Freeport. So the GP Cog Sustainability Team followed kind of the regional protocols that exist for modeling greenhouse gas emissions, and that gives us a snapshot of how Freeport as a community and how our municipal government and operations are generating greenhouse gas emissions that contribute to climate change. So that data portion that is represented in a technical appendices document, so if you're very interested in, in the data, you can see that on our website, and I can print a copy for you, too, but I warn you, it is a little, a little technical, so it's summarized in the plan, if you'd like to start there. The second piece of the data analysis that GP Cog led for us was on understanding our vulnerabilities, so where people and places in Freeport may be more at risk for climate impacts. So ways that our economy and our, you know, our public health and our natural resources and our infrastructure is at risk to things like sea level rise and intensifying storms, and extreme heat, and things like that. So those two data components were kind of the foundation of the planning process, and the advisory board worked really hard over the past year and a half to drive community engagement and outreach, so providing opportunities for community members, staff, stakeholders, and, and regional partners to give input on this planning effort, so that we could not only kind of ground truth the data, but also shape the outcome of the plan to be reflective of community priorities, ongoing projects, and concerns and needs of the Freeport community. So I can give some highlights of community engagement if you're interested, but again, I think you can read a lot more about that in the plan. There's a developing the plan chapter, which highlights the community engagement process we went through. I will say that some of the highlights for me personally were, we had a little workshop with the high school students recently, that was really great to hear their input and creative ideas, and just hear about, you know, their perspective on climate change, and, you know, climate change as a generational crisis for them, but they still had a lot of hope, and were really excited to get engaged at the municipal level. So hope that kind of two-way engagement can continue with our, our younger residents. So I hope that kind of two-way engagement can continue with our younger residents. So again, throughout the past year and a half, the board has been leading community engagement online and in person and having interviews and conversations and community dialogue throughout the process on different topics. And in the past couple of months, the board has been working to complete the draft plan. So the plan itself is a document. Hopefully, it is, you know, visually interesting. It's like a breezy 45 pages. So try to make it, you know, accessible for different readers and something that should not live on a shelf, but should hopefully be printed and, you know, and on our desks. So the plan, and then there's four appendices, so those kind of more technical documents I was referring to, that give an outline of all the data analysis conducted for this project. And the plan itself, you'll see when you dive into it, but it's organized in five different topic areas. And so across those five areas, we have goals, strategies, and actions. And I think if you had to focus your time over the next couple of weeks on just one thing, I'd recommend really diving into the implementation table, which is at the back of this printed packet. And that lays out all the different goals, strategies, and action items that are proposed in this final plan, as well as some more details on implementation and considerations, which are on the right-hand column. And those are notes and ideas gathered throughout the process where we think this action could be implemented successfully or effectively or more equitably. So what could this action look like? And that gives some flavor to what the conversations, you know, we had during this process on some of those action items. So again, recommend that if you had to choose a couple minutes to spend on this, please take a look at the implementation table. And then I think the other thing I can note as you're diving in and exploring this document is just to remember that this is an important strategic roadmap for the town leadership to take action on climate change, but it is also intended to be flexible and evolve with community priorities and evolving technology and new opportunities. And it's also meant to, you know, both achieve and work towards achieving the greenhouse gas reduction targets that were adopted by council this past October, but also really position the town to be better able to leverage federal and state grant money and integrate in regional partnerships. And so it could really be a tool for success moving forward in climate and in other topics that are related. So that is what is in front of you. And the board is very excited to have made it this far in the process and have had so many great conversations with community members and stakeholders. I'm happy to answer any questions. My board chair was meant to be here, but the Nordic Awards Ceremony was rescheduled, so I don't believe she's going to make it. So I'm happy to answer questions. But again, I don't want to kind of overload you with information before you have the chance to dig in and we have a chance to meet for a deeper discussion. So I'll leave it there.
Mehdi, I have a couple of things just to clarify. One, thank you very much, and thank you to the FSAB for its diligence to get this in front of us. I actually, I guess the question is for the manager. Do we have a workshop with FSAB?
So you have a short workshop as part of this cycle.
In April.
In April. But I've also scheduled or am working with Chris and Mehdi to schedule kind of a standalone. We're trying to figure out, do you need standalone workshop time for this? Kind of figured you would because it's a fairly meaty document. So we're working to schedule.
Great. That's precisely what's going to be my next comment, was that we have something a little bit bigger for a back-and-forth discussion where we're not distracted with other things and we have a more open timeframe. The second thing is while the plan clearly articulates what the town can do, should do, might do, there's also a lot of information here about what town residents can do and participating in a larger community effort. And it's not just the town government that people can look at the plan and say, oh yeah, the town's going to do that. So I think it's really important that that distinction be highlighted and that we're including the community as much as possible as whatever we may decide to roll out or how we talk about it, is that it's not just your town government that's going to do something. It... I mean, there are steps that we can take because we have certain functions here in the community. But I think that the energy behind this, not to be making a bad pun, but the energy behind this is to really engage, as you've done with data collection, is to really engage voices all around the community. It's a lot to bite off, and a lot of people are extremely busy and they want to know. They might have an interest. I'd like to know more about our Climate Action Plan, but what is it? And I think that's really where the hard work is still yet to come for us to really roll it out. And I would be in favor, once we do some strategy on this, to really have a series of public meetings and events and sort of, you know, co-schedule them with 4th of July and other, you know, big community events where we have huge turnout. Be a great opportunity to share this great information and really start engaging the whole community in it because I think that's really where this thing takes on its power.
Speaking of that, I know you had mentioned at the last FSAB meeting, doing some sort of companion one-pager pretty much for that reason of here's an executive summary of key takeaways to help with sort of that 42-page... I'll read every page. I'm sure all of us will, but folks who may not be able to, so.
Yeah, sure. So just kind of speaking to that a little bit more, other communities have created, you know, action guides that are companion to any municipal plans they have moved forward with. So I think that's something the board has been talking about. And there's plenty of resources available that we can just pull in, you know, window dressers and efficiency maintenance. There's a ton of resources. The state has done some work we can pull from as well. So putting that kind of thing together definitely won't be a big lift, and it's our intention to complete that in time for any kind of planned rollout. And I think that getting that in front of people and communicating it is... will be the next kind of, the bigger lift. Definitely agreed.
The other piece that I'm really excited about is that over the next fiscal year, we're still sharing Mehdi with Yarmith, but she's going to transition her role into an implementer and looking holistically at the town's environmental needs. And I'm very excited that she's agreed to stay with us for this next phase.
Eric.
Mehdi, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you for all of the work that you put into this as well as FSAB. It is a very attractive and graphically compelling document, and I know that is mostly up to you. But I want to say that, you know, I really only joined in meeting with FSAB in the home stretch of this process. But I simply wanted to commend to the council that FSAB has... The text here is hard-fought and worked over in great detail. And the FSAB has put in a tremendous amount of work back and forth for months and months to really have something that they're satisfied with and ready to present to us. So I am looking forward to that workshop probably in May, when we will sit with most of FSAB and really be able to go through this in detail and better understand how you arrived at some of these things because I know they were not... They did not come from nowhere. They've been very, very well researched and discussed. Thanks.
And just one last comment, not a question, but a comment. We had discussed how this is very excellent timing for the comprehensive plan process. So just more celebration for that, I suppose. This is great timing. I think it'll feed into the comprehensive planning process very nicely.
So once again, Counselor Smith has stolen my words. But I also noted the attractiveness of the document. It's very well laid out and well designed. Is that your doing? Did you put it together?
So we contracted with a professional graphic designer through GP-COG, but the board and I had probably 99% of it laid out before it went to the graphic designer.
Everybody's pointing at you, Mehdi.
This is a little passion of mine. I really think things should, you know, should be accessible and interesting to raise.
We're covering hidden skills within Town Hall.
So we did try to convince her to come to the communication side, and she said no.
Communications is a valuable part of what she does.
It is. She does a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mehdi. And we'll be looking forward to working with you and providing support and, you know, a resource here and there if we can work out what the town can do with locations and we have sound equipment and, you know, we can put it out for advertising and those kind of things to start the ball rolling and get some momentum going in the community.
Great.
Really appreciate the work, Mehdi.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. I know the draft is on the website. That's for anyone to read.
Correct.
I'm assuming if there's any feedback, we're not... Are we... We're done taking feedback? What are your thoughts on if there's feedback from folks reading it on the website?
Yes. So on the website, there should be an email address listed right above where all the documents are. It's also on the poster at the Freeport Library. So if you're encountering the plan document at that location, you're welcome to send us an email. I think we had closed our public comment portal that was open for the last couple of months on the document. And we're encouraging folks to bring their comments through the council process as well. So, you know, we're transparent with what we're hearing and that, you know, we're all hearing the same things and are able to respond and adjust accordingly. So I would encourage folks to engage in the council process, and you can send us an email and we can pass it on as well. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much, Mehdi.
Thank you.
Please pass on our support to the rest of your committee. All right. Our last other business item is just a quick discussion on some next steps from the list of recommendations for the town in general and specifically planning and zoning and some guidance from our staff on suggestions to accelerate and bring some velocity to getting more housing produced in our community across the board: affordable housing, market-rate housing, all different typologies, so that we can address the huge demand and provide more supply in an attempt to try and reasonable... make reasonable the acquisition and rental prices in our community. So our star player Brett Richardson, of course, made a nice matrix, which I just got. I didn't just get it. I just found it again. Brett sent it to me a couple of weeks ago. So I'm going to share this with you all on email. But he took the recommendations that were circulated at the last meeting, which was a one-page summary from the Housing Task Force, and put them into a priority matrix of sort of short-term, midterm, long-term, who's responsible, what the timeframe might be for feedback on those kind of things. So I'm going to share that with you and as a teaser to keep your interest in this. For instance, one of the items might be to create an inventory of all multifamily housing units to capture the count, the sizes, sizable, the number of school-aged children and any STRs. That was an item that was near the top of the list from the Housing Task Force, and Brett's already identified that we can work with our comp plan vendor, our assessor, as well as an intern that Brett's already identified. And we've already got resources to do this and that, you know, we've already got the bones of this report that we can pull together. So that is sort of an easy, low-hanging fruit item, for instance. So I'm going to share this with you and ask the manager to craft a couple of action items so that we can take it off in manageable bites and make some recommendations so we don't flood Sam Capella and the planning board with a list of 50 things to do in the next three months so that we can prioritize. So at our meeting on the 23rd, you'll hopefully see a short list of some recommendations that we make from the council to the planning board for priority items. And we'll chew those over and have those for action. Matt?
Is there any ability to... Again, I think this is great. I just have a couple of comments. Is there any ability to add to some of these bullet points?
Absolutely.
So I love the data collection. I think that one piece that's missing is where we want to end up. And I think that some data as to comparable municipalities to ours could inform us as to, once we know what we have for certain housing stock, where we want to try to get to and what's an ideal mix and what those impacts are. Because I'm... If we don't have a plan of where we want to get to in terms of the right mix and the right total number, I think it'll be hard for us to action... make any action items. I also... I don't know how it fits in, but I'm really sensitive around the infrastructure impacts. And I know at various times, we've talked about things like the impact to sewer and water, and there's capacity there. We've looked at school capacity. But I think that once we have an idea of we're going to grow from, you know, 8,900 people to whatever that number is, I think that we need a mechanism to address the infrastructure so we can stage-gate this as needed.
Right.
And then the only other piece, I love the idea of being creative around TIP financing and creating policies to support that. It seems very vague as written now, and I'd be in favor of using it for targeted development projects and not necessarily just a comprehensive... I mean, I'll be candid, I wouldn't be interested in creating a TIP to support market-rate housing. I just don't think it furthers what we're trying to do as a town.
I'd agree with you more.
Yep.
It's a tool that we can pull to bring in what we're trying to get accomplished.
Absolutely. But I think we need to have a chance to define that.
Yep.
And it reads just really vague right now, and I wouldn't want us to get ahead of ourselves in coming up with a mechanism that doesn't meet our aims.
Last fall, the state and Maine Housing, our state housing finance agency, cosponsored a report by an outside vendor called HNRA, and it's a Maine housing outlook. And that you've heard headlines about the number of units that were short in the state. Today, there's a need for 38,000 housing units in the state right now, and by 2030, that number is predicted to be 84,000. And there's lots of solid data behind those predictions. The report is thick, makes the Climate Action Report look like a menu. So it's got a lot of meat in it, but it also breaks down by county and by region. And so you can do some interpolation from that data to get at a town of our size to get a decent estimate about where that housing demand is, as adjusted for where we are in the state in proximity to the major economic centers. So I'll share a link to that so that you can all take a look at it. It's an excellent report, and I'll share this matrix that Brett did for us.
I think just the only thing I would add is this kind of adds to a staff process that we are starting, which is key stakeholders on staff are going through a process of outlining all of the things that council wants to get done, all of the projects that were here, all of the things that the planning board needs to get done or that staff is tripping over in ordinance. And our hope is on the 23rd to be able to bring to you kind of the laundry list and sit down and begin some process of prioritization. One of the things that we're running into with the planning board, I don't know how to... If we're talking streets, I'd say we're running out of pavement. They are absolutely slammed with work. And so one of the ideas Caroline and I sat down, and one of the things that we'd like to talk to council about doing, we know that the Housing Task Force is set to sunset in June.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
And one of the things we're wondering is if we could take those folks and use them as staff resources so that when we're creating especially the housing-related things that will go to the... back to council and the planning board, they've already gone through kind of one sort of vetting so that by the time they get here, you can have policy discussion, but there would be some formulation from stakeholders who have, quite frankly, very diverse and keen skill set in this area.
Yeah, it's a professional group, for sure.
Well, it's a great group.
Planners and developers and... Planners and developers and finance people, and we have a member of the Planning Board on the group, so it's, it's an action group. They'd love to take on something like that. Well, I don't know. I can't say that for them, but I think they'd be very interested in exploring that idea, let's say.
We want to just be careful to make it clear, it's a staff group, so it's not a group doing the Planning Board's work.
Right.
They would be influencing what goes to the Planning Board.
Carrie, the water.
You all understand the supply-demand issue, right? Because I think if we had the supply, the demand, the cost in the housing, to your point, it'd be nice to know where we could be, should be, but if we build houses, it will take care of itself. No, you don't think so, but I...
I agree, it'll take care of itself someplace else. It won't necessarily take care of itself in our community, because we'll only have the things that have been built, and if they all look the same and are all priced the same, it's never going to change. What will happen is, more housing is a good thing across the board, but it pushes other strata of homes to other areas. And I'm saying I would like something different for Freeport than just solving the problem globally and having a very one-dimensional housing stock in our town.
I agree, it should be all at different levels, so I'm not disagreeing with that, but anyway, it's a supply and demand problem. That's where we are. We don't have, we have a high demand and not enough supply.
Cost is a huge influence on that, cost and land use restrictions.
And, yeah, I mean, I don't think it's, I think Freeport can do things other than simply build more houses, because when we look at some of the choices that have been made with our regulatory scheme, it definitely is causing, causing choices to be made that might not be meeting council's policy goals.
All right, so we'll take this in a couple of bites, and we'll get a look at it on the twenty-third. Reminder, we have workshops on the ninth and the sixteenth.
Could you just clarify what would be helpful for the rest of council to send to you in terms of our thoughts on priority bullets and...
Once you look at the matrix that Brett's got, it's got a color scheme on it, and you can sort of agree or disagree about what's in the early stage, mid-stage, or long-term, and maybe we can come up with three or four things out of that that we want to take a bite on.
Thank you.
Shall we make a motion? Are we done?
I forgot an item on my manager's report that I need a little bit of guidance on.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so...
I already covered this, you know.
I know, I'm sorry. Earl reminded me before he ran out the door that I forgot to talk to you about storm debris. So one of the things that's happening right now, in other communities, they're having formalized storm cleanup. They're resourced a little bit differently than we are. Earl is thinking that if we put a time out there, like in two weeks, we're going to come around and do storm cleanup, and we would probably do it two weeks, like after the snow melts, because, you know.
Right.
But that we would only come around once, and if it's not out there, we're not going to come back and pick it up.
Go for residents to put their debris out at the curb, kind of, I see.
His concern with doing that is because of the way we're resourced, it will put him behind in his spring effort. They were ahead, and now they're quickly racing behind, because we just had to clean up all the mess that we already cleaned up. So we're looking for some guidance. It's not budgeted, but we're trying to find out from council, is it important that we do what other communities are doing?
Can we get a ballpark on what a contract vendor might be to help out Earl?
He did a back-of-the-napkin and estimates that it's probably in the sixty, fifty to sixty thousand dollars.
Can I ask, have we had requests from residents?
No, we've had residents put things out at the curb.
But they know their own contract, solid waste contractor isn't going to pick those up?
Probably not, no. And would you like to sit on this? Because we're going to have a foot of snow, and it's going to have to melt and dry out again before we could embark on this. So maybe I could plant that seed, and you could give me feedback when we next meet?
I guess I would just follow up on that. I, I'm not sure, just because other communities are doing it and nobody here has requested it, that we ought to do something that we would not normally do. I recognize that these recent storms have, have caused a lot of damage, but I don't think we have usually done this even when we've had hurricanes, so that's my concern.
So I'm responding to Earl's want to be a community-oriented, we're not budgeted for it, we don't have the staff that some of the other communities have. Having said that, the transfer station is open and will accept debris.
For free?
For free.
Not to keep us here any longer, but I am curious about any updates on Winslow? I just, I went there last weekend and was just shocked at how badly it got hit, with some structural damage as well. Do you have any updates?
Yes, the updates are that Neil is working diligently with his very, very small crew. The rest of the crew is supposed to be here around the end of April, beginning of May, and I've already, and Neil and I've had a conversation, they have funds in their bank if they needed to hire contract. Earl has provided some assistance, and what I've learned about Neil is when he feels like he needs some help, he'll show up at my office door. So I think his, I think he's feeling like this is manageable. We are waiting to see if we get storm assistance for the most recent, the March storm, and will apply for the January storms too, I just don't, one of the issues, he spent, remember, if you recall, you appropriated an extra fifty thousand dollars because it was not engineered. So we're, we're searching, because we're hoping the bank was an engineered bank. If it's engineered and that eroded, we will qualify for assistance from FEMA. If it was not engineered, we won't.
Hmm. That's good to know.
Yep.
Before we take that motion, I forgot, thanks to Councilor Smith reminding me, we have public comment on non-agenda items for virtual participants. This would be the time, if you're online, you want to raise your hand if you have something to address the council. I apologize that I didn't get this before the other business item. Any hands up, Sophie?
No.
Nope.
Okay. So that closes virtual public comment on non-agenda items, and we'll take a motion.
Thanks to adjourn the meeting.
Seconded.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Six to zero, imagine that. Thank you all.
Eight fifteen, ahead of schedule. Ahead of your estimate.
That's ahead of my estimate. I thought the climate plan...